This is Town of Monroe Board of Finance Agenda Special Meeting Friday, May nineteenth, three o'clock. This meeting will be recorded and made available on the town's website pursuant to state law. If you're attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you're speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title at the top of the bow at the outset of each occasion. That such person is speaking. All votes taken were in which any member of the body or participating remotely should be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. Chat feature will not be utilized or considered during this meeting. So we've got Greg Beddo.
Present.
Mary Hall.
President.
Steve Kirsch.
Present.
Myself, Mike Mancho's, we got Ron Madomski.
Yep, present.
Ken Killag.
I'm here.
Frank there as well. Rebecca Zeddans here too. Perfect. Rebecca. Awesome. Anybody else we got? I can see Frank's there cut off. Alright.
That's it. Nobody else here.
We're ready to go. So review of the draft RFQ for audit services. Ron, you want to talk through?
Sure, Ken. Did you want to speak to anything or as far as?
Yeah, well, yeah, let me just um. Just because I think there's a little bit of um. We, I mean, just as we were walking in, I know there were a couple of uh. Questions that they wanted to address, and I think some of it would have be helpful just to understand from the town's purchasing policy. Um, for a service that would um, you know, be at this monetary threshold, right? It was a couple of options, right? And so an RFP process, request for proposals. Um, where you would um, would be kind of the one option, and that would involve. Um, submitting a very, you know, kind of a, obviously a very similar document that would request specific proposals with. Um, you know, with quotes for how much it's going to cost and what the services are going to be and blah, 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 blah. Those would have to be sealed bid proposals all received by a certain, you know, date and time with a bid opening. And that would become a. Process whereby you would no longer, I mean, once we open those sealed bids, the bids are the bids and that's it. Um, and it's, it's a somewhat more, that's typically used when you're per, you know, when you're doing other types of procurement. The purchasing policy allows for professional services um, such as this, it's actually. Create, you know, the, the other option for uh, for this process is for services just like this where um. A price alone is clearly not the only um. Is not the only and, and likely not the major driving force, right? So we're not, I mean, we could definitely, you know, find. Services for probably a lower price point, but is that who you want doing a municipal audit, right? So price is not the um, the driving factor. It's a combination of multiple things. Price is not. Um, necessarily the, the, the top one. And the process allows for a what's called a quality-based selection process. And it starts with a request for qualifications first. So you're simply asking them to submit. You know, their, their quote unquote resume, right? Their package of what they can bring to the table and allowing the review committee, which in this case is the Board of Finance, to determine. These are companies that based upon that response to qualifications, we want to pursue further discussions. And you're going to weed out the ones that you don't. Or maybe you take, and you may take all of them. You may just take the top three. You could do whatever you want. From that point forward, in this quality-based selection process, um, we are free to then negotiate on all. We are free to say, send us a, we want a proposal from you. We want a proposal from you. We can talk dollars. We can negotiate, and it's not a sealed bid process. We are locked into that low bid number. So that's why Ron's put together an RFQ so that we can. Um. We can, you know, the idea is to get you that information so that you can have these interviews. We can have those. Uh, follow-up conversations and um, but you're not going to see a list here of like, give us your, you know, give us your. Your quote, your dollar amount for those services. That would come second after you determine which companies you want to actually pursue further. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So as a result, things are all crafted in the, the realm of. You know, basically prove to, prove to the town, prove to the Board of Finance that you're qualified to do a municipal audit for the Town of Monroe. And that you're a good fit. That's basically what Ron's trying to put together. I think he's done a good job, but. At the end of the day, this is um, this is, you know, for the Board of Finance. So that's why, let's throw it over here. So Ron.
Yeah, so, yeah, so um, to kind of expand on what Ken just said, you know, the first um. Um. You know, the, the first thing I think, you know, we should probably tackle here is the timetable. And I don't think we have to lock into anything necessarily today. Um, because we do have, you know, so if you guys wanted to digest this, digest. Uh, the, the document for, for another until next month's meeting, I think we, there's ample time to do that. Because we did discuss starting the interviews in the fall, right?
Right.
So um, we, that gives us the summer to get this out. And. I, I put on here a release time of June fifteen, twenty twenty-three, but if, if, if we wanted to wait until after the net, the June meeting, we could certainly do that. Um, I don't think that's locked in stone because it still gives us, you know, we could give accounting firms until the end of July to respond. We can um, sift through the responses um. In August and set up interviews for September. And then um, the thought process was to have a new accounting firm um, in place. Um, before, before any kind of municipal elections, because you, your feeling was, was that would just kind of muddy the waters for everybody.
Yeah.
And just because there may not, you know, there are some people on this board that may or may not run again, right? I think there's some seats open. So i- i- that process should probably happen before um.
Yeah, I mean, I just think if this, you know, we're doing this right now, it should be this Board of Finance making that award with current town council, you know.
Yeah.
That makes, that makes sense to me. I, I hadn't thought about that.
I just think it's, you know, otherwise.
I think the sooner we get it out, the sooner the better. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, you know.
And there's ample time. There's, there's ample time, right? Um. So. That was, so if you look at on page one, it kind of goes through that there are some dates there. And again, those dates can change. This has changed. This is a draft document, so that's certainly for discussion for today. Um, page two would be the, the notice that, you know, the, the actual request for qualifications that we put on our website, probably put in the paper, I would imagine.
Yep, or summary thereof, yep.
And then um, so that, a legal notice on page two. Um, and then, you know, the, the actual um. You know, document itself, it kind of speaks for itself. You want me to just go through it page by page, Mike? Is that uh? Does that make sense?
That's fine.
Okay, so on page three, that's pretty much everything that's in the uh, legal notice, expanded a little more. Um. You know, at the very bottom, it says, this request for qualifications includes standard instructions to respond and scope of work, qualification form, and statement of references. Now, the scope, actually, the um. That's something we may have changed. I, I, I said scope of work, but then it's really.
Work is incorporated.
We incorporated that into the, into the qualifications information required. So that's something I should probably change.
Yeah, so I had.
You know, let me go up, go grab a uh.
You want to borrow a pen?
Yeah.
So. Can I ask questions as we go along?
I think it's.
They're wrong.
More sensitive though.
Hey, I'm, I'm okay. Sure.
So, so you, you've picked up on the scope of work and you're about to go to the, to page four. And, and the reason I just want to, I just want to go to page four because it, it refers back. I- in my mind to, to the prior, in the first sentence under introduction, it says, the town is accepting responses from qualified accounting firms. For audit services as herein before defined, and I don't think we've actually defined those. Audit services.
Right.
So I think this is the commentary that, that Rebecca, we were having a side comment before the meeting, uh, Mike and everyone else. And, and that was a, a, a comment that I took. Rebecca made that I had, had already thought about. So I understand this is a, a request for qualifications, so. Do we not, we do not have to define the audit services? Is it understood that people responding to this will understand what that is?
They will because, well, they will, but I, I'm not, I, I don't disagree that maybe we should.
I think.
Tweet that.
Yeah. For.
Well, we didn't find it.
I don't think it'd be, I think it should be for audit ser- municipal audit services.
Okay.
I think that's.
Then period.
Take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I think, I think you're correct. You're both correct, yeah.
Okay.
Good. It's for municipal audit services.
Yeah.
I.
Right, because I didn't think we needed to, I don't think.
I don't think you do either, no. But.
And you're right, unless you all thought we needed to define it.
Yes.
No, I don't think so either.
Good.
And I don't want to, they are defined, but I, I agree with you. So let's just jump ahead. Let me just jump ahead to page nine, just to kind of give you guys the gist of. In number four on page nine, qualify, qualification information required. Under four, it says, a narrative which discusses the firm's qualifications and experience in performing municipal audits in Connecticut, including what, without limitation, prior audit engagements that. Those bullets there kind of are the meat of.
Of an audit.
Of an, of a municipal audit in Connecticut, okay? So that's.
That's right, but we hadn't here in, we hadn't here before defined it, so.
Yep.
When I got to that. Ending of the document. You know, I saw.
Yeah.
So Ron, Ron, in, in, in follow-up to what, what was just raised. Are we sending this to firms that would be familiar with uh, what would be required by municipality audits?
So I don't believe we're going to be sending it to any firm. We're going to be posting it on our website.
Okay.
And, you know, they, they'll, you know.
Yeah, but you could put up a GF, GF OA.
What?
Yeah. They do that. I don't know if they do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put it, you know, and I think we'll put it on the state.
State portal.
State portal. You know, we'll put it in every, and we'll put it in the newspaper. We'll put it, so it's.
Okay. So, so it's not going to be a, it's not going to be a direct contact uh, reach out letter. It's going to be more of a general uh, you know, uh.
Broad.
Format for them to come forward, but firms would be, would be um. Firm should be looking for this. I mean, sometimes putting it in the newspaper and whatever doesn't always.
Yeah, that, that, I think in this day and age, most firms would be, would be looking on the, on our website, on the portal, they probably, I, I know last times, we had, we, last time when we did go out for an RFP eight years ago, it was uh. We had firms uh, from Maine looking to, to bid on it and uh.
So, so the last one, and this was one of my other questions, the last time we did this, it was not an RFQ, it was an RFP?
It was an RFP and it, it was uh. It was, it was more of a, to Ken's point earlier, it was more of a um. Limited process. Ultimately, and Mike, you, you were involved in that process.
I was.
A, a lot of it came down to the interviews. And, and the, you know, certainly price, but now we get to choose who, we still get to choose who we want to interview. Um, which, which firms we want to choose based on qualifications and then negotiate price.
Right, so. And I don't, I don't think the purchasing policy back then allowed for the quality-based selection process, so that was a. Something we added.
Is that a fair representation of uh?
Yeah, they were all within the same, they were all within the same range. It was just that we felt much more comfortable, really with two of them that we got down to, you know.
Yeah, so. To, just to, just to underscore what Ron was saying earlier, so that. Most of the firms um, that will get, will hear from, will probably get it from the state of Connecticut's um, purchasing portal. So firms of all different types subscribe to uh, bid or RFQ, RFP types of announcements. Through the state portal and municipalities can, are on that. Most municipalities are on that as well, and they. You know, they check the categories of things they want. So we'll put one up. It'll be financial services or whatever the category is and. You know, that's how they'll, that's how most of them will get it.
Mary, did you have another question there?
No, I, no, I'm just thinking, I mean, I read this earlier. I mean, in my prior life, you know, I, I, I really liked RFQs because. Awarding something isn't always just based on cost. It's based on the service. Also, I really believe in an RFP. I mean, it's more work, Ron, but it's, but it's worth it.
Yeah, I think it's more um.
It's two steps.
I think it's, it's, it's a couple of steps. It's, I think it's less paperwork. It's more interviewing and, and meeting and, you know, certainly we'll have uh, you know. You know, a, a, a set of questions to ask each firm and uh. You know, I think it's more of a hands-on process.
I mean, I'm just looking again, as you were talking, I'm looking at, at the scope on page nine and then the questions, those five questions on page ten. Is that going to be um? I don't want to say broad enough, but uh, um. Is, is that going to generate by the firms more questions to you that you're going to have to respond back to them? On what exactly you're looking for? Or do you think that the firms that will respond to this will understand it and they've done this with other municipalities, so we shouldn't be standard?
I think probably a little of both. I think you'll get, I think you'll get firms that have done this before that'll know exactly what I'm talking about, and I think maybe other firms that. The reality is, is might be less qualified, um, you know, may have, may have more questions.
Okay.
You're going to get some that. They're going to pull out their, their boilerplate package and. You know, hide it up and send it. I mean, some of them just have this.
Have it all ready.
On the shelf.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
So, the, the, I mean, one of the main reasons was i- if there are other questions or if, if, if you. You know, if, if you guys, you know, as a board want to add any, anything else, um.
Why don't you finish going through?
Yeah, I mean, certainly that's up for discussion. I mean, it's.
Because I've got a number of questions on.
Sure.
At the end.
Yeah, so again, going through um. You know, there's, there's some, I didn't want to get into any of like, you know, I think I said in the email, uh, this still has to get legal reviewed. Uh, by the town attorney, just to make sure there's nothing in it that um. You know. Will cause us angst in the future. Um. So again, the key dates on, on three, you know, um, certainly up for discussion, but if that works for everyone on the board, you know, if that works for the board as a whole. Um, I felt like something like that makes sense. Um.
I thought the dates were fine.
Um. Let's see, I'm on page five of eleven now. I think a lot of this stuff is just procedural stuff. Um, I was looking at getting eight hard copies submitted. That's for everyone on the board and one for the uh, first selectmen and myself.
Okay.
Um. And a lot of this stuff, uh, comes from our, yeah, a lot of this comes from the RFP template. Um, I don't know, just kind of perusing page six. Again, a lot of it's just uh. Um. Procedural type of stuff or. FOI and.
Well, I, um, just a question, where does the insurance values come from? Is that just some?
That comes, so on page seven?
On page seven.
So I, I pulled those right off of, Perma gives us a, a tear sheet of, of what they want to say.
Oh, it's okay. Based upon the nature of the vendor.
Nature of the vendor, okay.
What they're doing, yeah.
Cool.
So, yeah, so we just jumped to page seven there, but again, I don't, if, if anyone, a lot of this stuff is, uh, if anyone has specific questions, I can certainly answer them, but I think. I think the meat of what we wanted to go over was on page nine and uh, nine and ten. Um. Actually, one thing, so I'm paid, before we jump to page nine, page eight kind of runs through the process. And I'm certainly going to look over this again, but it, you know, the award criteria, selection, contract execution, so. Um, thi- this kind of runs through. What's going to happen once we make our selections from the RFQ? So I don't know if everyone wants to just kind of read sixteen and see if that makes sense.
I, I, I've read it. It does, it did to me.
Okay.
Did to me too.
I'm, I'm assuming the interview times are what you have seen before.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's what we've done before.
As a member of the public, and I don't remember how long it lasts.
Yeah, I, I think.
Pretty, I mean. You kind of want to.
Usually know in about fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm just. That's fine.
We could certainly uh, you know. Look, and I think, I think we could um, you know, this is. I think this is kind of giving them a footprint, but you know, if, if it comes down to, hey, we really like these two firms and these are the two firms we want to interview. Maybe we want to spend a little more time with each of them.
Well, yeah, there's no limitation to us running over. I mean, if we're having a good time and we're curious to go further, we'll go further, but it just, this sets at least expectations from them to prepare to.
Yeah.
Are, are we? I'm sorry, Mike, are we limited to, to one interview? For, for firm? So if, if, if we, if we got. Ten and, and we, we have them in for this uh, uh, initial. Conversation, and we then want to, you know, bring three or four of them back for a, a more in-depth or, or second round. Is there anything that prohibits?
My recollection is the last time we did this is we did, we brought two in kind of for the final. Because it was, you know, there was two that were head and shoulders above the rest.
Okay, so there's nothing in here, not stated, but there's, there's nothing that prevents us from doing a second round. And it's not necessary to explicitly state that there might be a second round.
Correct, because we, exactly. It's not something we.
Do you see any? I don't.
It, it can't hurt in that you've got a sentence here that's based upon the results of the interviews. The board will determine which. Accounting firm or firms will request proposals. You could add comma, comma, additional information, comma, or subsequent.
Or second.
Yeah, you could just.
Okay.
You could throw it out there, but. You know.
Not necessary, but.
Yeah.
Can't hurt, but.
Not going to hurt it.
Ron, I'm back on page nine again. It doesn't, and maybe I'm missing something because I've read it fast again, but is there, is there anything that, that's indicating to them? That this could be a multi-year contract or are we looking just for, for one year?
So, um. With, with audit engagements, you sign engagement letters every year. Um, certainly the intent is to um. And GF OA, uh, Government Finance Officers Association best practices is to, is actually to engage for five years. Because there, there is a lot of upfront work and, you know, just to keep some sense of continuity. Having said that. I think you would want the flexibility, if, if year one was a complete disaster for some reason to.
Yep.
To, to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, and again, I think it's an excellent question, but it's one that would come up at the point you are now asking for proposals. Because that's. That would be a term of the engagement and you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily uh. Again, you want to stick to qualifications here, not terms of the engagement.
Right.
Yeah. But that's a great, when you get to that point, that's a good thing to see what are, you know, are they proposing a multi-year engagement or? Just a one year, right?
Mm-hmm.
That, that speaks uh.
So, so Ken, to that point. In the RFQ that they're going to submit and, you know, we're going to select. Two or three to come and give us a presentation. But we could, but if we don't know in, in uh. Some type of a, some type of a cost, we could be picking all of the real expensive ones. And not giving some of the others an opportunity to come in, to come and pitch, and I'm, you know, and I know that's a, a fine line to, to walk. But um. Should we, and, and I'm just opening up for discussion, should we include in the RFQ, oh, okay, uh, a um. A high-level estimate of what it would cost for one year?
That it's no longer.
Not RFQ, right?
It becomes a sealed bid, a sealed bid.
You can't do that, yeah.
Your, your whole process would be.
I, I, I think to that point though, let's say we like three firms, but, but. Couldn't find a.
Yeah, if all the numbers come in the stratosphere, then you go back to maybe.
Correct.
Other firms that were on your. In your queue, you know, I mean.
We already have a benchmark, so I don't.
Nothing preventing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're not going to have stuff that wildly varies, you know, you're not going to have one that double.
And there's nothing, I, I mean, there's nothing limiting how many you just choo- choose to bring in. I mean, obviously you want to make it manageable, but. You know, if you really, really, really like five, there's nothing saying you can't bring in five.
Right.
It's entire, it's entirely up to the board.
Okay.
You know. Um. I know, I know exactly where you're at, Mary. It's, it's, you know, it's a fine. You know, you want to, you want to get as much information you can upfront, but to try and. You know, be in compliance with the. With the framework that we're operating under. It's, it's, we're trying to. We're trying to give the ta- you know, give the town the, the most flexibility to. To be able to negotiate this and, and get. The best uh. The best in terms of quality and, quality and price, you know.
Yeah, and, and the more I think about it, if, if I look at some of the questions again on page uh, ten. Their response to some of those questions, how many professionals will there be, uh, support administration? I mean, we're finance people, so we can probably almost look at if. Uh, uh, you know, uh, firm A is saying, you know, we're going to have ten. And firm B says we're only going to have administrative staff, you kind of get a feel of where the numbers might come in.
Yeah, well, ye- yes and no. I, you know, a firm with a heavier staff may actually be able to bang the engagement out quicker too.
Right.
You know, so as opposed to it just lingering a little longer and looking uh, as I.
No. Ron, that's a good question. Do we ask that on the anticipated turnaround time?
Number ten.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm going, and I have.
Four. Yes.
It, it's, it's in there. And, and I, and I have a, uh, some questions about the question, but I want to see if we can get to page nine first, if we could.
Sure. So, um. Alright, yeah, so we've kind of jumped around between, a little bit between nine, ten and eleven, so, so um, I'm sorry, eight, nine and ten, so uh. We'll, we'll move past the eights, so we, yeah, so. Um, yeah, nine was just basically, hey, this is, this is what we're looking for from, from each of you guys, you know, um. We want to make sure, you know, the, the, you know, obviously just, you know, the cover and instruction, uh, introductory letter, size, history, organization, structure of firm. Um. You know. I'd like to get a, you know, a well-established firm that's done municipal audits in Connecticut, you know, I, I think that's uh. Um, and there, there are. Because at the end of the day, um, we do need the, you know, we've got to uh, you know. The. Firm, I believe, needs approval from OPM as well, so it's, it's.
Um, so on number three.
Yep.
I would call out that you want a designated point of contact and a designated legal contact.
That's a good point.
Very good.
That's a good point, Rebecca.
You don't have to. Hustle to figure out who you need a contact.
Yeah, so. So Ken, I'm going to, can I push a question at you? Do you think that's something we would ask now or more? Stage two? When we ask for proposals from, or maybe both?
I think, I mean, um. I think. Company, I, I think this actually say provide a resume of the key personnel that would work on the engagement.
Yep.
I think maybe there you would say, including.
Well, you could put it under questions.
Including primary. Including primary engagement and legal. Including primary engagement and legal. Uh, personnel or something like that, which is, uh, and then reinforcing the proposal, who those people are gonna be, you know, to confirm that, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, nothing would be precluding them. At the qualifications. Yeah, at least. In the qualifications phase, there would be nothing precluded them to say, well, here's, you know. Here's three different people that. You know, I'm giving you resumes of the three people, you know, any one of which may be assigned to you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in a final engagement or something like that.
And if you didn't like it there, you could put it under a question, tell me who you think.
But.
Yeah.
I like it, then you're actually, you're identifying not only who there, but you're making sure you get that resume.
Right.
So that's a good. I think it's a good ad.
And you can, now then you can start doing some. GQ on people, yeah. Um, I had a question, uh, number four. The paragraph. Four. What, what does EFS stand for? I don't believe we've. It, that it's defined or, or used in its full text.
E- Education Financial System, it's a portal in the Connecticut, if you go on the Connecticut State Department of Education's website, it's agreed upon procedures. On the, uh. Boards.
You just might, you might just want to spell that out.
Um.
I think his thought is that they don't know what it is.
I think.
They still don't belong in this game, right?
Exactly.
Well, every, every place, every, I, it, it dawned on me, hey, I didn't realize it, it didn't know it, but every place. But, but a bunch of other places, right? The next two sentences, you know, you, you, you usually.
You have the acronym.
You have the acronym.
Yeah, I, I cer- I certainly could.
Between those two things, it, it hit me like, okay, I don't know what it is, I realize I shouldn't necessarily, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's funny.
Yeah, and like I said, it's not, um.
Alright.
Okay, so I have a general question. Um, which didn't really hit me frankly until I got on to the next page. Why do we use the term engagement rather than audit? Um, as, as we go through. Here, because like when I was reading I- item five. You know, describe the general approach and timing of the engagement. Well, that really means audit.
Audit, we, we, the other thing is we could say audit engagement. I mean, it's their letter, they're, yeah, it's an engagement letter.
And, and the only.
What's that?
I would advise keeping it as engagement.
That's the term they use the.
Yeah, I, well, I know that, and then the last question on, on. On page ten, uh, number five, we use the, we use the term audit instead of engagement.
Where are you?
Uh, on, under questions on page ten, number five.
Yep.
Is your firm staff appropriately to perform the, and here we use the word audit. So. I understand that the engagement is, is an audit, I, it, it's, it's a question, I just wondered, again, as I read through the whole thing, it just sort of hit me that.
Well, and you'd have to plural, maybe not plural, I mean, there's multiple.
Okay. I mean, is that just standard the way it is? That's, that's fine by me. He said it didn't hit me until it got through the end, there's, instead of the word engagement.
Got it wrong? Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh. I, I, I think you could almost use them interchangeably, but you could also say audit engagement to. Man.
I don't think it matters either way.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think it matters.
Engagement throughout.
Yeah, let me, let me, uh, I, I will certainly, uh, give that a re- a look. And just kind of.
Is there an assumption that's made for how the data is exchanged?
So. Good question. Um, in this day and age, a lot of it's done. You know. One of our questions.
Yeah, I thought one of them said something about providing.
Um, is.
Remote versus hybrid.
Remote versus hybrid now.
She's asking it a slightly different way, which is I think very.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
It is a good point.
Cause your concern was not just whether they're gonna be on site, but.
No, dad.
But, but, but how much.
But if it's, if there's gonna be a hybrid element, there's gonna be a portal involved.
Right.
Which is what we use now to.
Ken, do you want to ask that question?
Um, we certainly could.
I think you should, because that.
Should have a point.
Even if they're gonna do some remote work. I mean. There, so there was a. There was another, not, not this, have an audit, another program audit that we were dealing with, um, that we had to send up to the state on just a routine thing. And the state office. You know, they're completely remote now and they're not doing it, and so instead of them coming down here, going through all the. The grant stuff and pulling out what they need to and, and doing what they do. Which they do for every, you know, every single time they award this grant. Instead, they had us like, we had to go do it all, scan it all and upload it to some.
Mm-hmm.
Site, which took a lot of staff time, so I think it's a great, a great thing to.
Just, uh.
Dive into, cause the last thing we want is.
What requirements are necessary to send and receive data? And then I'm assuming invoicing schedule and all that would come later.
I would think, yeah. I'm trying to think, yeah, it's more of a. Firm qualification.
Just like talking about scope, additional scope.
Any other questions?
Yes, I will, I've, I've got a completely different one. So on, on page ten, on the questions, question one deals. Um, with the, the question of hybrid and remote and question two deals with. Um, how many professionals will be assigned? What I'm questioning is what I would like to know are the level of the people that will be doing the work. And especially relative to people who might be on site.
Yeah, so. In, in three, in the prior page, that, I think that would address that. So three list of all, list all professionals that, that will be assigned to the engagement, their staff level. Junior, senior manager, partner, and number of years at the firm. Provide a resume of the key person.
Like I think what I see to say though is. They could give us a list of rock stars that are gonna be on the engagement, but if they're not gonna be the ones actually on site. You care about, is that something?
Oh, oh, I would.
That's exactly.
So that's, yeah.
Okay, so.
If. I, I don't want, I don't want you all to be stuck with. The lower level people here and, and, well, yeah, we've got, we've got some senior people, but. They're never here, they're not talking to you directly, or they're only, or they're only doing remote in, in, you know, and they never show up.
Yeah.
Do you care about part-time or?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think how to phrase the question. Do I care about what?
Part-time or full-time status if they're, you know, have all these wonky hours, can't reach them.
Yeah, it could. It could, uh.
So I, I, I wrote the following.
Put that name out. Do you have one being out there?
So, so, I, I wrote, I wrote.
I love it.
I wrote the following for myself, Ron, so it may not be appropriate to. But you can, you can work. I, I said, I, you know, I would like to know about the levels of the people. Who will be doing the work in? And will the more senior people be on site? So that's really, you know. Uh, uh, of those assigned. Yeah. We'll, we'll all. Will senior level people be participating in all, in all? You know, in all levels, will they both, will senior level people be?
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
Well, maybe, maybe, Ron.
Maybe the right way to do is take.
Ron, to Steve's point, maybe in number two. The second question, you could elaborate a little bit more and ask them about their staffing plan. Into the level of, of folks that will be hybrid and those folks that would be on site to, uh, support the audit.
However, tha- that's why I say I, I sort of married one and two and said I need a, there's a. There's a piece missing, you can take my thought and figure out. Don't have to come up with a question tonight.
Yeah, or I was thinking you take the, the second. The second sentence in one, you know, if. I would not even just hybrid, I would say, you know. Maybe to say, you know, if a- any work is gonna be done remotely. You know, ask for more details, not just the estimate allocation, but specifically which work and by what level staff, etcetera, you know, like.
Yeah.
Get into the weeds, so like.
Yes.
What work is gonna be done remotely?
Yeah.
Good question. A good.
Yeah. Yeah, I, 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 I would want to make sure that you've got senior level staff dealing with our. With our folks.
Yeah, well.
On a fair length, and maybe, and maybe that's, that's me and you've got a different view.
Yeah, I think, you know, you're all, you always have, always have audit juniors on it. The, the question is, is are they adequately supervised?
Okay, right.
Yeah, it's like a law firm, my, right. It's the interns doing the work. Okay, you, you understand my, my issue?
Um, and number five, do we want to, uh, we talk about similar engagements, but do you want to know if they've been involved with prior engagements with the town of Monroe?
Um.
And I think I would want them most current, like. Within the past five years.
You're on page nine.
Yeah.
Well, Mike, Mike, you would know because you, I mean, you go back.
Forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like if we have the incumbent, do you want the incumbent to, you know, obviously will know, but.
Yeah, I mean, do, would I expect the incumbent to, to probably submit? I would. Expect they would.
Right.
Um.
Right.
The audit firm in place prior to that is, um. Mahoney Sable, and they're still around, is, you know, they were our audit firm for. Quite a bit of time. Um, I would expect them to submit as well, they're still doing municipal audits. Um, prior to that, I mean, we're going back over sixteen years at that point.
So you don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could go back to audit statements to, to find out, but at that point. The, the changeover in the staff's probably been so significant, it wouldn't matter.
Do you want to put a timing on that, like the engagements within the past five years, so they're not telling us, oh, back in nineteen eighty-five, we did. Blah, blah, blah.
Um, engagement, that's, that's not bad to add, I think that makes sense.
I think that's a good add on the references too, say the references have to be in the last five years. Because. Obviously.
Yeah, I mean, you want to.
We want recent, right, so if it's. Firm that was really great, but. Now they're doing everything remotely, so we don't like them anymore.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, they need to be a relevant reference.
Can we have a feel?
Well, so if I put. Within the last five years, I think it's what it says is provide client references for these engagements. Meaning. On seven. It does say for these engagements, you respond.
Okay.
But I think maybe on.
That's on page eleven.
Yeah, so on page eleven, respondent statements of references. What do you think, like, for, for audits done within the last?
Yeah, they gave us from the last five years, yeah. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
You guys know what town, who does towns around us, just as a matter of.
You can go on the, you can go on the AMO TM website to find out who audits every town in the state of Connecticut. Yeah. It's actually.
That was everything I had.
I'm good. Anybody got anything else?
Rebecca's got some notes here, she may not be done.
Good. Cause some of it could come in the next phase, so.
Yeah. So. I mean. Wh- when's the next? Regular meeting, uh. June fifteenth? Is that correct?
I'm assuming you've got the calendar, I can't.
Um.
So when it comes to references, let me just ask this while I have.
Sure. Yeah, it's June fifteenth.
One thing that I ask, um, is how many, for references. How many accounts have you renewed and or retained in the past six months and how many accounts have you lost in the past six months? I don't, if you want any of that. For. At least knowledge of. Their volume and responsibilities, but you said everything in public. We could check that ourselves.
We could, we could.
Um, it would be hard though to. Get. History. Going back.
Is that a question we want? Is that a qualification question, or that would that be a stage?
No, I, I think it's a, I think it's a qualification.
So, maybe we add it to the questions then, so.
Um, we phrase that.
How many accounts have you renewed and or retained? Via new proposal in the past six months? How many accounts have you lost in the past six months to provide the same or similar services as addressed in this RFQ? If you want, I can give you those notes.
Yeah, that's, that's, I can keep this?
Yeah.
Or make a copy, do you want?
No, no.
I can give it.
Yeah.
So this, this is my thought, and, and this might, and I don't think it's really gonna change the schedule all that much, is maybe at, at the next meeting. Um. Have for you guys, the. You know, a revised copy. To go through these changes, does that make sense? For June fifteenth?
I think. If you can incorporate those changes and we can get.
Hopefully have a legal review.
Attorney review by then. And then have a final draft, you know.
Does that make sense? And then maybe, maybe push out, instead of the, the release date being June fifteenth, maybe. Maybe. You know, maybe sixteen, maybe we could do it June sixteenth.
Right.
That far. Yeah, does that make sense?
Works for me, that's timing, Shubert.
And, and I guess the only other thing I would say is, is if somebody, and I think we're okay doing this as long as they send it directly to me and we don't make a meeting out of it, if anyone else has anything. Maybe, maybe have it go through.
Right, right.
Do you want to have them send it directly to me or go through you, Mike?
Doesn't matter, whatever's easier for you. As long as we're not sending it to everybody.
It ought to go just straight to you.
Yeah, okay. I'm oka- I'm okay with it coming straight to me, so, um.
Good. Save me the trouble.
Yeah.
Alright. We're good?
So, final. Draft for. The June, uh, fifteenth meeting and then.
Release on the sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
And then we should have that this time with attorney.
Yep.
Review before the fifteenth.
And, and, uh, Ron, you're gonna send it out to us. A couple of days before, so we have, or, so we have.
I, I would, I would expect to, to hopefully have that to you, no later than that, than that, um, Tuesday, if I can get it earlier, I will.
Okay, great.
The, you know. Um.
The thirteen.
The thirteen, so hopefully by, uh, Tuesday, uh, you know, either Monday evening or Tuesday morning, so the twelve, thirteen.
Ron, you did a nice job with this.
Oh, it was, uh, it was a group effort between myself and, uh, First Selectman Kellogg. But thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a good read.
No, I think this was, uh, this was a good productive, uh. Uh, Rob.
Yeah, very good.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
So then next we have the.
Sure.
Twenty twenty-three Board of Education.
Alright. So. I've got a few questions, but I, let, let, let Ron finish looking at.
Yeah, I'm good.
Before I. Start with my question, um. So, so a few things, um, number one, just to make note, since this, this report was for ten months. Um, that means it's about eighty-three percent of the year. um, that means it's about eighty-three percent of the year, um, uh, we're, we're spending. So my first question, which I hope I know the answer to, was on page one, the pension contribution, second line from the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm assuming the three hundred eighty-six thousand available in the budget is because we have a, have a pension payment. We just have not.
Yeah, not maybe pension. Correct.
Okay, my, my next question, um, is on page two. It is the transport, student transportation, seven, five, five, one hundred. Um, it's at a hundred and three, um, percent. Um, what, what, was there a, a special driver?
Special ed transportation.
Amount of students or, or, or needs, uh.
I think both, yeah. So, a, and the other thing is, is, you know, a, as you guys know, special ed, we've got that reserve, just in case, I don't anticipate needing that.
Okay.
Um, but special ed transportation was the driver, um, a- also athletic transportation.
I thought you were gonna say.
Yeah, um, so, coach buses, uh, to, to get the kids to, uh, athletic events after school, um, a lot of coach buses have been, uh.
Rent.
Yeah, and, and it's, they're, they're about triple the price.
Okay, um. Then the, the next one is on page two, um, uh, tuition public. Um, it says within, and I'm not sure what, what that means, within the what, but at two hundred ninety-four percent, um, we're obviously way over, so, again, is that? Is that driven by?
That's special education.
Some, okay, so that, that just, that's just chalk it up to our inability to, to know in advance what we're gonna, what we're gonna get.
Well, you see the line below it, it's, it's, uh, it could be where kids are placed, whether it's a public placement or a private placement.
Okay.
The one that below that's.
Yeah.
Under.
It is, is, yes.
The same general.
Still bad, right? Well, that, well, that's tuition private.
Yeah, but that's that also, I think you're saying, right?
Well, it is, yeah, all, yeah, I know all, I know all of those are special ads, but, um, if, if there was a, if there was a driver, and since we're so close to the end of the year.
Sure. Look, we're still, we're still cleaning up encumbrances, you know, P O's that can be, you know.
Right, which is why I'm not asking you about any of the things that aren't encumbered, because I know some accounts are encumbered, some you don't. Um, and, and those accounted for, you know, uh, just weirdnesses, because that's just the way we operate it. Um, two more questions, page three, um, the bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it, this, this says we're gonna, the available budget is, is three million. I don't expect you.
No.
Number three, do you have a, have a?
So my, my, yeah, so my, right now, with, with, with three months, uh, three weeks left to school and a, in a month and a half left to the fiscal year, um, my best projection is between three and five hundred.
Three and five hundred thousand, okay. Okay. Hold on one, one second, Mary, let me, let me, let me just finish up, um. At the budget workshops, um, Joe presented a list of possible spend ahead items, if you remember that list. Has, has any of those, have any of those been done, or are you, is he still planning to do some of those?
So.
Between now and.
The answer is no, because we're still waiting to see where the chips fall.
Okay.
Okay, having said that, and talking with, uh, facilities, Dan Prossick, the, the director of facilities, he's, 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 um, he's got his wishlist going and, and, you know, trying to get as prepped as possible, so he can pull the trigger if need be.
And what, and, and what's the latest date that you have to pull a trigger in order?
We, if, if, if we can. By June thirtieth. Yeah, so, and again. What's that, Mike?
At eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah. Yeah, and, 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 and look, it, it's a good time to do projects at the school, right?
Right.
July and August.
Okay, no, I just, I, I know we're obviously in May, uh, obviously I'll ask the same question in June, you'll be a little bit closer to the end. So the, those last two questions are mirror images of, of, you know, the same issue. Okay, um, that's it. Thank you. I'll, Mary, if you've got questions?
Yeah, I just got one, you know, uh, one general one. So you said, uh, Ron, three hundred to five hundred. Where would that surplus come from? Or I shouldn't say surplus, where would that, uh, not spent money come from?
So, um, a, a chunk of it, and I'm gonna say about fifty percent of it is, um, um, medical insurance related, okay? And the balance is larger, it's just spread throughout the budget. But a good, I'm gonna say fifty percent of it, Mary, is, is attributable to, uh, health insurance.
Okay.
So Ron, are you given the new adopted policies for, for, um, transfers? Are you expecting to do one massive transfer?
So we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing some, some more smaller transfers, and I'm expect, the problem is, is the board, I think, has one meeting in June.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure.
Too early.
It's too early, yeah. So, um, I, I may, and I know they have a July meeting scheduled. I think it's usually canceled, so I may try to squeeze in a, a special meeting if need be, either the latter part of June or early July.
So you can actually do it in July?
We can do it in July.
Okay.
A lot of time, look at on this side.
Without a doubt, we do it all the time.
Yeah.
That's true, we do, yeah.
Because it, it takes that long for the, you know. Exactly.
All right, fine, okay.
Where you're really at.
Exactly.
That was it for me.
All right.
Anything else on your side, Ron?
I'm, I'm, I'm good, Mike.
Perfect.
Hearing nothing else, Steve Kirsch. Well, you got something else?
Thank you all. No, that was, I was going there next. Love it.
All right, hey, everyone, have a great weekend.